Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 14, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Westchester Trustees. Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Yes, Mrs. Becker.
Present.
Mr. Wong.
Present.
Mr. Welch.
Present.
Please stand with me and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did we have anyone sign up for first citizens comments? That was our, this is our first citizens comments portion tonight. We didn't have anyone sign up, but there, if there are any residents, business owners, property owners that would like to speak, we have a second citizens comments later in the evening, later in the meeting. We don't have any presentations tonight, so we'll start with our action items. I'll entertain a motion to approve trustee meeting minutes for June 9, 2020.
I should move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
And Mr. Wong.
Present.
Yes. Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to approve trustee meeting minutes for June 23, 2020.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
And Mr. Wong.
Yes.
And Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to approve trustee meeting minutes for June 23, 2020.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
And Mr. Wong.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve payment bills.
I should move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
And Mr. Wong.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve payment bills.
I should move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
And Mr. Wong.
Yes.
And Mr. Welch.
Yes.
And Ms. Brown, requisitions greater than 7,500.
Yes, item number one is for $80,797.01 to Dell Marketing LP to purchase 28 computers and five servers per five-year replacement plan using multiple CIPs. This is, this is for the purchase of computers and servers, which is an annual purchase. This is a planned purchase that we do every year and is usually planned out about five years for known costs and then we add on some additional items if needed. The share, I don't believe that that is true. Item number two is for $41,629.85 to Hastings Air Energy Control to upgrade diesel exhaust systems to magnetic plymover at Station 71, Station 72, Station 74, and Station 75. This is a requisition item for the fire department. They currently have a pneumatic system which allows a diesel exhaust capture system to attach to their fire engines, which then takes it outside of the building. Those are quite old. I think 2006 is the latest date that I have in here as of the age of these things, but they're just costing more and more and more to maintain. So it's time to move to a magnetic system, which then eliminates a lot of the parts and pieces that can need to be repaired and replaced. Item three is for $13,190 to Connoise Rental to purchase Exmark mower using CIP 1357. This is a planned replacement. This is a mower that is, I think, 11 years old and it is just old and has a lot of engine hours on it and is ready to be replaced.
Thank you so much. I'll entertain a motion to approve requisition items one through three.
I should move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Dennis, since you're sitting right there, will you give us a quick rundown on what our computers and our servers, what kind of data do we run here in the township that we need this much server space and computers?
So, all the PCs on the replacement, which is 28, is our normal replacement. So each one of those machines is five years old or older, so that they're out of warranty and just slower machines typically. As far as the servers go, these servers are for our virtualized servers. We do have other servers that the township maintains. What this does is it allows different programs and operating systems to run in a virtual environment. So with these servers that we're replacing, they equate to 63 individual virtual machines or systems encompassing the use of 182 processors, 768 gigabytes of memory, and 25.3 terabytes of data. So what this, the benefit to the virtualization, even though these servers aren't the cheapest, is otherwise we'd have to have all these as individual units, either a machine, a PC, or a server that's only slightly less expensive. So it's a significant cost savings to go the virtual route when we can.
I just thought it was, it's a lot of computers, a lot of space, and we do a lot of things in the background. People don't realize what we do. Very high tech, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No ma'am.
Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mr. Wong.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes. We do have a few personnel items. Item four, administration.
Motion to promote Mrs. Christie Williams to the vacant position of administrative assistant in administration effective July 20, 2020 at the hourly rate of $19.64 with a 90-day probationary period. Christie has been our secretary for the last little bit over a year in administration. She's done a great job and we did a competitive process without, and she beat out the outside competitors for the position. She has been filling the administrative assistant position basically since March when we had her vacancy, and she's picked up those jobs, plus her duties as secretary, and has done a great job. She'll be a great fit and a great asset in the position.
Wonderful. I'll entertain a motion to approve item four.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? I appreciate you, Christie. I think you do a great job in the front. It's nice to see you when I come in. Anything else? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
And Mr. Wong.
Yes.
Our next personnel item is in services.
A motion to hire two seasonal employees, Mr. Alexander Fay effective June 22, 2020, and Mr. Caleb Pressler effective June 29, 2020, both at the hourly rate of $12 per hour. At the beginning of the year, in February, on February 25th this year, the board always approves the hiring of our seasonal employees so we can get them on board as soon as we find them. It's a hard-to-fill position usually, and so the addition of these two seasonal employees brings us to nine of the 15 being filled.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve item five.
I should move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
And Mr. Wong.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Now, we have a few business items. We have, we have several this evening. Let's move on to item six. It's administration.
So I'm going to give an intro to item six and seven, kind of at the same time. They're both to deal with the same issue. On, at the last trustee meeting on June 23, the trustees approved the resolution of necessity for a police and fire tax levy. Once we sent that over to the auditor, we found out some additional information and that the Ohio Department of Taxation has initiated an administrative order for counties to start, start making certain townships, create police district and fire districts before they will certify their levies. This is to do with the fact that in certain townships, which Westchester is one, there are municipalities that have come in and annexed parts of the township, and so we do not provide services to that part of the township. So in those situations, we now have to create a district to fully delineate where we are providing services and who will be paying taxes for those services. And so item six is to create a fire district and item seven is to create the police district. So, item six is a motion to approve statutory resolution number 18-2020, creating a fire district.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve statutory resolution number 18-2020.
I should move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions?
Like Lisa said, this is something that the state of Ohio requires, and we have a very small little part of Westchester in that southeast corner there, which is annexed by Sharonville, that, like you said, we have to carve that out because they don't pay taxes, they don't get our services. So it's as simple as that for both the fire.
I think Fairfield took a bite too, didn't they?
There are some areas where we've been annexed, but they have been taken out of our geographic boundaries. So Sharonville, I believe, is the only one where it's double, where they are still within the township's boundaries, but have also been incorporated by Sharonville.
Very good.
Makes sense.
Anything else? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mr. Wong.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes. I'll, I'll just move to the motion for item seven, since you already explained it. I'll entertain a motion to approve statutory resolution number 19-2020.
I should move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Wong.
Yes.
Item eight, administration.
Again, I'll speak about item eight and item nine together unless there's any additional questions. Because we had to create the police district and the fire district, then trustees need to re-vote on the levies that were approved at the last meeting. Nothing has changed. The monetary value is still the same. It's two mills police, two mills fire. We just have to do it to make the wording match now our police and fire districts.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve statutory resolution 20-2020.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
And Mr. Wong.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve statutory resolution number 21-2020.
I should move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mr. Wong.
Yes.
And Mr. Welch.
Yes.
And Mrs. Becker.
Yes. Item 10, administration.
Item 10 is motion to advertise for bids for township administration building refresh. So about two years ago, we started kicking around the idea of making some security improvements here in the administration building. To go along with that, we were going to do some basic updates such as wall coverings and carpet. So that is quite a large project, and so in order to be fully transparent and competitive, we are asking the trustees to approve a motion to advertise bids to complete this project.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve item 10.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Competition works.
It's a fair competition.
We have to maintain what we have. Got to take care of all of our, our buildings, and it's expensive sometimes. Very good. Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Yeah, Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
And Mr. Wong.
Yes.
Item 11, administration.
A motion to approve statutory resolution number 23-2020 affirming that funds from the county coronavirus relief distribution fund may be expended only to cover costs consistent with Federal CARES Act and Ohio House Bill 481. In March, the federal government passed the CARES Act, which pushed down funding to the states and then eventually down to local governments. And then in June 10, on June 10, the Ohio State Legislature, legislatures, sorry, passed House Bill 481 that then allowed that money to be released down to the counties, which will then be distributed to, to the local governments. In order to receive this disbursement of funds, municipalities or local governments that want to receive these funds have to pass a resolution, which is what we're requesting here tonight. And the purpose of the resolution is to affirm that the funds will only be used for appropriate response to the current public health emergency for expenditures that were not already planned in the 2020 budget, and that funds will be expended between March 1st and December 30th, 2020. Westchester's initial allocation is $1.16 million. So once we pass the resolution and once we create the fund, we can receive those, those monies from the county. And then we have until October 15th to expend those on proper items, on proper expenses. And then at that time, it'll go back to the county, and then it'll be redistributed if there's additional funding. And then whatever is not expended by December 28th of this year will then go back to the state.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve statutory resolution 23-2020.
I should move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Quick question, Lisa. Does it eventually make us wait back to the federal government?
I believe that is the intent. Actually, I'll have to ask Ken that. I'll wait for him to weigh in, and then I will provide that answer to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Any more discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
And Mr. Wong.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Item number 12, community development.
A motion to declare 7110 Tyler'sville Road as a public nuisance.
Very good. I'll read the motion. Having reviewed the staff report and affidavit, I move that we declare the property located at 7110 Tyler'sville to be a public nuisance as authorized by Ohio Advice Code. Staff is directed to cause removal of the nuisance identified and monitor the property for 90 days to continue, to require continued compliance. An administrative charge of 25% shall be added to the contractor fee for the property. Do I have a second?
I second.
All right. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mr. Wong.
Yes.
And Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes. We have two emergency readings tonight and two public hearings. The two public hearings will begin at 7:00 PM. So we'll go through the two emergency resolutions right now, and then we'll skip over those public hearings. We do have executive session tonight as well, so we will be clearing the room out at the end. We're going to meet in here just because there's enough space, just to give everybody a little bit of fair warning. Can we get some information about the emergency resolution? Can we get some information about the emergency resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty?
Yes, resolution twenty-two, twenty twenty is authorizing establishment of two revenue funds. One is the coronavirus supplemental fund, and the second is coronavirus relief fund. One of these funds has to be created in order to receive those CARE, that Cares Act funding that we just discussed. That is a requirement to receive that funding. And the other one is to receive funds from the Department of Justice Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program grant. This is a grant application that was approved by the trustees a couple of meetings ago that the police department has applied for. And so their regulation is that it has to be in a separate fund that is interest earning.
Any questions about the resolution? I'll entertain a motion to declare resolution number twenty-two dash twenty an emergency and dispense with the second reading.
Let's all move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes. Emergency resolution twenty-four dash twenty twenty.
And before I move on, the Cares Act funding would roll back to the federal government if it's not expended by the state.
Thank you.
Very good.
Resolution twenty-four, twenty twenty is adopting the twenty-twenty-one tax budget and declaring it an emergency and dispensing with the second reading. This is an item that has to be approved by the trustees every year. This is just the beginning of the budgeting process. It's a best guesstimate, educated guesstimate of where our revenues are going to come in for twenty-twenty-one. And this just gets approved, and it's sent to the county auditor, and that's where we start our funding discussion for twenty-twenty-one.
Any clarification? I'll entertain a motion to declare resolution number twenty-four dash twenty twenty an emergency and dispense with the second reading.
Let's all move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Very good. We've come to the second citizens' comments portion of our meeting. Any Westchester resident, business owner, property owner that would like to approach the board with comments, concerns, you're invited to do so at this time. If you have questions for the board or for staff, we'll hear them now and address them during our discussion period. The board doesn't exchange and back and forth at this time out of respect for time and for the staff, for all the residents. So are there any members of the community that would like to address the board this evening? Dennis, we, reminder to give us your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. My name is Dennis Bradbury. Nine oh three one and nine oh two three, Cincinnati Dayton Road. I just had walked in and heard that you were letting residents come to the podium. I'm sorry I'm late. I'm just concerned about the tax proposal for the five hundred dollar mailboxes on Cincinnati Dayton Road. We didn't order them. We never got to see them. We never got to see what they would look like once they did arrive. When they did arrive on that day, it was the final bow for the gift of the upgrade for Cincinnati Dayton Road, old Westchester corridor. And now we find out that there's a tax and a fund going to be created if one of those mailboxes or vintage light poles gets knocked down. The amount of trucks that travel that corridor, they're very close to the light poles, very close to the mailboxes. If a tire casing lets go, it'll easily take out a light pole and mailbox. You've seen them black pieces of rubber on the interstate. So that's my only concern. I understand there's a hearing tonight for that. Thank you, Ms. Becker.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other citizens, residents, business owners that would like to speak? Will you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Good afternoon. My name's Yasmin Brown Jones, and I'm at seventy-eight, seventy-two Orchard Court in Westchester. So I'm here today to address the trustees and the township on behalf of our chief of police, Chief Joel Herzog. Have been here as a resident for the past thirteen years for the second time, and had the pleasure of meeting the chief several years ago, maybe, I don't know, eight, nine, or ten. Lot of things going on in the media, lot of things going on in the community, lot of unrest going on in our world. And I don't want the township to lose sight of what the real issue is. The real issue is not Chief Herzog. He has done a mighty good deed for our community. He is doing some great things for our community. He has supported me, my three young, black male children, above and beyond. He is supporting this community by trying, trying to become a better chief of police. That's all we can ask for. I don't know if there's any person in this room, in this township on earth who can say they've never done something or said something they shouldn't have. So I ask that you understand and know the man, not the comments. I do know that when you're in a leadership role, you're expected to present yourself at a higher level. But it still doesn't mean that you're a perfect person. I'd much rather be working with someone that I know is about the mission of making this a better place, a better community, a better world for my black children, for me. I'd much be rather working with someone who I know who is about doing the work than to be guessing. So if you're looking for someone, you know, shiny, never made a mistake, I'd hope you don't bring them here. I'd rather be working with a real person, someone who's trying to move the needle. So as you consider our chief of police, consider the whole picture. Let's not go backwards to go forward. Again, just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Yasmin. Were there any other comments? Last call? Anyone else? Seeing none. I appreciate you guys. Thank you so much. We will move on now to our second readings of our two emergency resolutions. We'll approve those tonight. So we'll vote on emergency resolution number twenty-two dash twenty twenty. That's the establishment of the two coronavirus supplemental fund and corona relief fund. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty.
Let's all move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Very good. The next vote is emergency resolution twenty-four dash twenty twenty, adopting the twenty-twenty-one tax budget. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash twenty twenty.
Let's all move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes. Now, we've come to our discussion items and elected official comments. Right off the bat, our thoughts are with our administrator Larry Burks this week. He's dealing with a family emergency, so our thoughts and prayers go out to him, and we wish he was here. But I think we did have one discussion item that we were going to address.
Yes, just a couple of items. The first item is that we are going to have a public hearing at the next meeting on July twenty-eighth for a no parking zone on the north side of Union Center Drive. So there will be notifications going out to property owners and signage going up, but this is just public notification that we will be having that. A second item was, there was some interest in having a discussion about possibly staff looking into some road improvements on Cincinnati Dayton Road interchange that we have the DDI going in here at Union Center, and we have Tyler'sville Bridge and all of that going up. And so Cincinnati Dayton Road is one of our major, is our major interchange that has not been addressed. It's an opportune time. We do have our strategic, next strategic planning session coming up here in about three weeks. That'll be on August third and August fourth, and that'll be an off-site exercise with the trustees and staff. And so this was an item that was included on the last strategic plan, and maybe one that we continue on to the next one and add into some of the goals and activities that we talk about looking into the next two years.
That's all I have. Very good. Any comments on that idea?
No.
We'll flush it out and see what comes of it. Mr. Jones, did you have anything?
No, I don't. Thank you, Deb.
Mr. Welch?
Neither do I.
Rolling on. Mr. Wong?
I just wanted to make a small comment that I go out to the community a lot, and I talk to big tow truck driver, delivery restaurant people, residents. They all have a very deep appreciation of our police department, the work they have done. I feel it is very safe in this community because of the outstanding work done by our police officers, men and women. And that under the leadership of Chief Herzog, I, if you recall, there was a big murder. That was one of the biggest that I heard of here since I got here, quadruple. Wow, he solved that in a timely manner. Not through him, his teamwork. He has tremendous professionalism. Yes, he is a leader, like our residents here just commented. He's on the top spot. Nobody is perfect. This is a, it's good that, hey, we all, people can come in here file complaint against me, against anybody here. We are public officials. It makes me a better person also. As I get older, there was a song saying, you know, I get better at what I do. And that I, we all, you know, this is life. But I think, in my opinion, Chief Herzog has done a wonderful job in this community. He cares about us. He cares about this community. He lives here. He has tremendous stake in this community for a long time that I've known him. That's all I have.
Very good. I have a couple of things. We have a great deal of road construction happening in the township right now. But I want to assure everybody, these aren't Band-Aid fixes to our roads. These are structural changes that will improve the safety of our roads over time. So please be patient and drive carefully around the construction. We did get some good news. Beckett Road is open over by the barn, so Beckett Ridge has a little bit of relief. You can leave out another way now, so that's really nice. I wanted to thank the fire department for the handling of the fire in Beckett over the weekend. I know that was a big, big blaze. Several, several fire departments helped. So please pass along our appreciation to them for their cooperation. I'm glad to see everyone got out safe. With regards to our issue with the police department, there's been a lot of discussion in the media regarding the personnel issues. I want to address our residents in particular and assure them that these issues have had no impact on our exceptional service of our police department. Our officers are there for you every single day doing their work. They're still one of the best, the best, one of the best police departments in the country. We've all been receiving emails and phone calls about this issue from residents. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your thoughts. Keep them, keep them coming. And to our officers, I've read each one of the complaints, and I can assure you that all the complaints are being taken very seriously by the administration, by my fellow trustees. And we are going to look into them and make sure that the right, just thing happens for our police department. These are all personnel issues. They're people's reputations. They're people's lives. And we're trying to maintain the continued health of our police department, and we'll deal with this issue in a very deliberate and thoughtful way. So as we move forward, we will take a serious decision. We do need to make some changes, and changes will come, so. We do have executive session this evening, so I will, I'll entertain a motion to recess. Did anyone else have anything else?
May I add in that the intersection is going to open next month? That's good news.
Yes, the, the DDI is scheduled, at this time, is scheduled for full closure on, sorry, July twenty-second and to reopen on July twenty-seventh as the new DDI configuration. There will still be some work. There'll be striping. There'll be signage. There'll be, I think, a last course of asphalt that has to go down. But pretty much, it'll be the new configuration, and so that'll be exciting to see how that all works out. But the construction will start to slow down a little bit on that, on that front.
It is ahead of schedule.
Yes.
So will there be a ribbon cutting? We're going to get out there and...
In the middle of the roadway.
Well, we could get out there at five o'clock on a Monday morning, you know, because it opens up at six.
That's true. Does everyone want to get out there at six in the morning?
I'm up at that time, so.
I know you are. Are you, you're working on it probably by the time you...
Yeah.
That means I have to get up at four thirty to be here.
Drive up here. We'll talk, we'll talk.
We talked about maybe a virtual. We can look at a virtual.
That's lame.
Plenty of room to, a safe distance.
A safe distance from the traffic.
We're looking forward to the opening. That's a very nice intersection.
That'll be great. I'm excited. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting and go to executive session for the purpose of considering the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee. That's ORC one-two-one point two-two G one. To consider the discipline of a public employee, that's ORC one-one-two point two-two G one again. To conference with the attorney for the township concerning disputes involving the township that are subject of pending or imminent court action, that's ORC one-one-two-one point two-two G three. Do I have a motion?
Let's all move. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
We are in recess.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn executive session and resume the July 14th, 2020 regular meeting.
Aye, so move.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
We do have one second reading, item fifteen. This is the second reading for resolution number fourteen dash twenty twenty, which approves the zoning map amendment from A1 to M2 for case number ZMA zero three dash twenty twenty, the Castanelli property, the Westchester Trade Center, Building Eight. Do I have a motion?
A so move.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes. Sorry about that quick delay, everybody. We do have two public hearings this evening. Just a reminder to everybody, oh, let me, let me open the session for the public hearing. Just a reminder to all those who are here for public comment, this is the first reading, so we'll vote on these at our next meeting. If you're watching this online or you have any questions, feel free to send us your questions on these two cases. We will have a presentation for each case, and after the presentation, we're gonna have public comments. To tho- to those who are here, the public comments are organized into three parts. This is to help us organize our facts of who's for it, why they're for it, who's against it, that sort of thing. So there are the three parts are proponent, proponents, that's for the change. There's opponents, those, those people are against, against the change. And then there's neutral information, that's just trying to share something with us that we may not know about the property. So as you listen to the presentation, think about your question and how it fits into that proponent for, opponent against, or neutral. So let, we are gonna start off tonight with resolution number twenty-five dash twenty twenty, that's KCMA zero four dash twenty, that's the Brate Two Republic Wire. Tim, will you give us the presentation?
Thank you, Mrs. Becker. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me well enough?
We can, yeah.
Here we have a site aerial within the vicinity of the site, the site's highlighted in red. The site's located along Princeton Glendale Road, approximately four hundred and twenty feet south of Smith Road. Here we have a survey of the existing conditions. The site consists of fifteen point two four acres, having approximately eight hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage along Princeton Glendale Road. The site's characterized as flat and vacant, which consists of a majority being agricultural field and containing a single-family dwelling and a portion of the Milk Creek. We have a few ground view pictures of the site. This is along State Route seven forty-seven, Princeton Glendale Road, with a view of the northwest. We can see the new access drive, now named Brate Drive. A view to the northeast. And a view to the northwest. The current zoning of the site is A1 Agricultural District, surrounding industrial to the west and south, and commercial and residential to the north. The applicant's proposing a four hundred thousand square foot office light industrial use. Will be providing a hundred parking spaces, where a hundred and fifty-five spaces are required, and nineteen point seven percent open space where the township requires fifteen percent. The two thousand four and two thousand thirteen comprehensive land use recommended the site on the western portion as office light industrial and extended the community mixed-use classification to the south along the frontage for further general retail uses at that time. The applicant is proposing a preliminary development plan which maintains consistency with their request for the office light industrial use by connecting accessways and internal streets along the newly constructed Brate Drive and coordinating architectural design features and materials with the overall campus. Additionally, they're proposing, proposing larger window features into the design along the frontage that gives more of an office building appearance, which may be the case that the office use portion is located there. Furthermore, the building height will be consistent with thirty to forty-foot requirement for commercial buildings and compatible with the adjacent two-story apartment buildings, and a high degree of landscaping is also proposed throughout the site to include enhanced screening along the north property line adjacent to those residents. The land use planning committee reviewed the plans via the video conference on May sixth, considering the amendment to extend the office light industrial use throughout the site. Hearing all considerations from staff, the committee determined the amendment would be approved for the proposed, proposed, recommended for the proposed land use classification to extend the office light industrial throughout. The applicant is requesting approval of the use at a reduction of fifty-five spaces, which is sixty-five percent of the required number of spaces. The applicant has stated, during daytime operations, the warehouse will be staffed with forty employees and the office will be staffed with twenty-five employees. Additionally, the warehouse will be staffed with twenty employees during nighttime operations. This reduction could be considered to be justified by the state of workforce operations. However, enforcement of daily operations will be highly difficult to enforce and may be a burden on any future change in user of the site. Currently, the township resolution requires one space for, per three thousand square feet and one space per four hundred square feet for the office use. Although the plan unit development does allow for variation or flexibility in what is typically allowed, a thirty-five percent reduction is significant and can be detrimental if the use is not operated as specifically allowed. Therefore, the zoning commission's recommendation for approval condition the use to operate only within the proposed workforce and to limit all future use to this condition. Unless a new user applies for a major change to the plan unit development, which would allow the zoning commission then to reevaluate that new use. Also, as you can see here, the proposed parking spaces along the west and south of the building. Also, we have highlighted the emergency access drive for the fire department and the a key connection to the township's overall pedestrian connections plan and the upcoming Smith Road Connector project. The applicant has illustrated a six-foot wide multipurpose path integrated into the emergency fire access lane, which includes wayfinding signage and extends from the frontage along the north property line and along the west of the building. However, the property line ends before the, well, where the right-of-way will be dedicated. Therefore, we're requesting that the, the applicant apply for and get a right-of-way permit to then extend the curb ramp to Brate Drive, which is not shown on our proposed plan. In consideration of reducing any detrimental impacts to the adjacent residents, such things as dumpster enclosures, the rooftop mechanical units, light fixtures, and then the photometric study will also be required at the final development plan stage. Additionally, the proposed landscaping plan illustrates adequate screening, street trees, and building perimeter landscaping to ensure a well-appointed site. Finally, all preliminary sign type and locations were not provided at this time. Therefore, they'll be considered at the final development plan stage as well. There is a consideration that the illuminated signs are only allowed on the south and east-facing walls due to the proximity of the residents to the north. Board trustees are to approve, approve modifications or deny the submitted zoning map amendment and preliminary development plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Do we have any other properties in the township that have a conditional parking structure like this property will have?
Offhand, I can't, I can't remember since I've been here that we've approved any off-site easements for park, parking, but the zoning commission has allowed reductions. Mainly, the ones that I was involved with were residential units. And those reductions were, where we required two spaces per unit. I think the, the least amount we allowed was one point two spaces per unit. So the reduction of thirty-five, thirty-five percent is significant and is a major consideration. But we, we have drafted the conditions that state that it is for this specific use. And if he is, the applicant is to sell the property in future, he's aware that it would be a burden on him then to sell it to, you know, potential buyer because of that limit and that then they would have to come back to the zoning commission so the zoning commission could then reevaluate that new applicant.
Total employees, forty?
He has, um, he stated twenty-five employees, I'm sorry, forty employees in the office, forty employees in the warehouse during the day, twenty-five in the office, and then he only has a total of twenty employees at night.
Sixty-five maximum. How many parking space total?
A hundred. He does have the opportunity to provide some future parking spaces along the green space, south of the loading docks. He hasn't proposed them at this time because of the, his safety concerns of the trucks coming in for loading and having the potential to back into those vehicles.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah. At what point, I know that this particular project has been looked at with regards to an enterprise zone agreement. At, at what point would we consider something like that?
Well, any negotiations involving the enterprise zone agreement would be separate from the zoning decision.
Okay, okay. So, you know, when I look at, when I look at this and I look at the parking, you know, it's, it's my personal opinion as a business owner myself, that the business owner knows much better.
What he needs.
What he needs. And, and so even if it is a, in this case, a thirty-five percent reduction, I mean, you know, it's his business, so.
Shouldn't get really get in his way.
Yep.
Any other questions?
No.
I don't have anymore.
Is the applicant here?
He is.
Did you?
And his agent.
Okay.
His engineer.
Do they have anything they want to share with us in addition to your presentation?
I believe they do want to present.
Come on up and give us your name, address, and affiliation for the record, please.
If you can, excuse me, if you can't hear me, just let me know. My name's Ron Rosenbeck. Address is eighty-six sixty-two Indian Ridge Drive in Westchester. My office currently, Republic Wire, is fifty-five My office currently, Republic Wire, is 5525 Union Center Drive. Actually, the applicant is not me, but our real estate company called For Our Investments, which owns our current 400,000 square foot building behind the BP on Union Center Boulevard. In fact, one of the things I'm proud to say is I moved out here in 1994 and I was one of the first three buildings out here. JP Flooring was owned by Dick Alderson at that time and they had a little industrial park there and I bought four and a half acres. And at the time, I wish I had more money because it's a little bit more expensive to buy acreage out here now. But, we have expanded five times since I've been out here. We have 135 employees presently. What we're doing in this situation is moving our distribution off-site and make that more manufacturing and make the distribution our new 400,000 square foot building. That's why you're only seeing 40 employees in the warehouse and 25 in the office because, excuse me, what, what we're doing is we have a lot of racking in our building and a lot of big reels of wire, so it takes up a lot of square footage. So, if you're wondering why in 400,000 square feet we only have 40 people, everything's moved by forklifts and/or, you know, I mean, it's, there's hardly anything is carried by hand. Everything is moved by machinery. So, our goal is to expand and have more employees over on Union Center Drive. So.
Wonderful.
And we hope to be out here, we've been out here 25 years. I hope that I'm out here another 25 years.
So do we.
So that'd make me almost 100 years old. And that's fine with me. So, any questions?
Any questions?
Do you intend to move this project right away once this is?
We're actually, unfortunately, with the economic times right now, we're actually gonna, it's gonna be kind of a wait and see. As soon as we see the economy, which we're starting to see already, the economy's starting to open up and we continue to see things get better in the United States as far as everything that's been going on with the virus, then we're gonna go ahead with it. But until then, we'll probably hold until we get to that point. So, it probably would be sometime mid to late next year, you know, but we may, may start sooner than that with excavation and stuff if, if everything looks okay.
Okay. Very nice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron.
Appreciate it.
You have any questions on the building?
Looks pretty straightforward.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. It's Dave Clark with McGill Smith Punchin, 3700 Park 42 Drive, Suite 190B, Cincinnati, Ohio 45241. I think Mr. Dawson and Mr. Rosenbeck did a good job of summarizing. If there's any questions on the building or the design, I can, I can answer them. I did have some, I can leave these, some additional renderings that we've done of the buildings, some light shots just to show an idea. We really wanted to focus on that slanted edge of the building that faces the main, the new intersection there, just to give that a real, more of an office feel than a warehouse feel and give them kind of a signature look for their business in Westchester. So, I can leave these here. You guys can look at it or ask around.
Pass them down.
That's okay. I know.
I did appreciate that effort to make, it doesn't really look like a distribution center.
Is there any questions just on the building or the engineering of the site or the design? I can answer those.
Good. Did anyone else have any question, any questions?
That's great.
So this time we'll move to questions from the audience and residents. Is there anyone who would like to speak as a proponent for this project, for this project? Ask again, is there anyone who wants to speak for this project? Very good. Is there anyone who wanted to speak in opposition to this project or was against it? Ask one more time, anyone against? Seeing none. I'll move on to neutral. Anyone with neutral information to share with us? No? No neutral information? Very good. Any final questions from my fellow trustees?
Nope.
Mr. Dawson, will you read the resolution?
This is resolution number 25-2020, approving a zoning map amendment and preliminary development plan for case number ZMA 04-20, rate two, Republic Wire. Be resolved that on the basis of the above actions and findings, the Westchester Township Board of Trustees does hereby concur with the Westchester Township Zoning Commission and does hereby approve a zoning map amendment from A1 Agricultural District to IPUD Industrial Plan Unit Development District and preliminary development plan, and there are 22 conditions with this site.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Dawson.
Thank you.
At this time, I declare the public hearing closed for resolution number 25-20. That's case number ZMA 04-20. So at this time, I declare open. Just do that one more time because it's fun. The, the public hearing for the Cincinnati Dayton Road Landscape Improvement and Maintenance District. Ken, do you have a presentation for us?
Yes, ma'am. These handouts are available at the foyer during the public.
I'll just make that announcement. Mr., Kim said these are, information sheets are out in the foyer. We want a copy of them. Pass a resolution, we have to use at least 11-point font on this stuff?
Yes. We're here again to talk about a proposed landscape district on Cincinnati Dayton Road. In 2018 and 19, Cincinnati Dayton Road Corridor, Old Westchester Improvement Project, Roadwinding, New Bridges, Sidewalks, Aesthetic Features, Identifying the Character of the District. A lighting district was approved with that, conjunction with that project on May 9, 2017 with resolution 17, 2017. And tonight, we're going, considering the priority in maintaining these new amenities with the poles and the mailboxes and the possibility of further amenities should funds Landscape and maintenance for the improvement district and assessing property owners on a semi-annual basis in order to share the cost, maintenance and repair, decorative features. You can see a picture of the mailboxes and the signposts. A mailbox and post is approximately $400 and the signpost is 750. This is the map of the properties in the area and we have that on our website and there's 96 parcels with 63 property owners, $4,000 a year for, it stays $4,000 for all 10 years. Assessments based on lineal feet frontage, owned and controlled by the property owners. The average cost per partial is $41.67 and the average annual cost per owner at $63.49. This does exclude the post office. We took the post office off. The process tonight after we started new, based on feedback we've got of our meeting in, in May, started anew, having a public meeting tonight on July 14th. There will be a second reading of the resolution on the next meeting in July 28th if the trustees proceed that way and assessments would happen in 2021. And I have the resolution here is that we're debating here. I'm going to hear from the people if it's all right. I can read that?
Yeah, we can, we can read it at the end.
At the end?
Yeah.
So, any questions for me?
Any questions for Ken?
It's pretty clear.
Anything?
Nope.
No. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll take comments from the public. We're going to do it in those three parts. So if you're for the project, against the project, or neutral on the project. So we'll start off with the proponent. So if you have comments you'd like to make to us that is in support of this, this project, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Bill Lendell. I live at 6080 Tennyson Drive, Westchester. I'm for this, this resolution because I just, first of all, I want to thank Westchester for putting some beautiful amenities in place. I think they're just, have added so much to, to Old Westchester. And now, I made my comments last time, but now it's our time to maintain those. If we don't do something to maintain them, they'll degrade over time. So, that's the reason I'm for this, but you've heard my comments last time.
Thanks, Bill.
Is there anyone else that wanted to make comments in support of this project? Very good. Seeing none. At this time, is there anyone present who would like to speak as an opponent against this project? Feel free to step up. Don't rush all at once. Your name and address for the record, please, Dennis.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. My name is Dennis Bradbury. I live at 9031 and 9023 Cincinnati Dayton Road. Our family's been here for seven decades. During the upgrades and the road widening, we were told at one point to the closure and completion, you're going to get new mailboxes. We never seen a picture, never knew the cost, but you guys are going to get new mailboxes. And then it came the day, they said, "We're going to put mailboxes up tomorrow." So a lot of the residents, myself, we went out and bought new mailboxes, a cedar post and a simple, simple mailbox and laid it by the, right in front of our homes. When we came home at night, when I came home at night, all 14 of the mailboxes were gone. They were thrown in a dumpster, they were brand new, and we get the mailbox that we have now. Well, great. That's a good thing. We had no idea that later on down the road that we're going to have to pay for those mailboxes and then have to pay for one of the vintage light poles that gets either hit by a car or a tire casing from a semi-truck explodes, takes it out. Those, those are things that are very real. The semi-trucks, because of the road widening, by the way, I am a driver. I travel from Monticello, Kentucky to Denver twice a month. I'm pro trucking. The number of trucks that are right there on top of the sidewalk, if we, if you are a resident who has a home and your bedroom is very close to that sidewalk, you know when a truck goes by, let alone whenever a tire casing would let go. So I, it should not be our responsibility to create this fund. There should be insurance somewhere along the line to take care of such events should they happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Is there anyone else that would like to speak as an opponent of this project? Will you give us your name and address for the record when you approach?
I prefer to be the last speaker because I straddle the line between being in opposition and being neutral.
That's okay.
Okay. Is there anybody else that's going to speak in opposition?
I did have a comment from a resident.
Okay. Ken, why don't you?
Why don't you go ahead?
Why don't you put your comment into submission first and then we'll let this resident speak?
On behalf of Floyd Gadberry and Sarah Sadfield, they're requesting to not be included in the landscape district. They are property number 70, a little bit north of, of the, of the, where the lighting, lights are. We are both elderly and on fixed incomes. We cannot afford any increases in our property bill, tax bill. The township wouldn't install sidewalks nor streetlights in our area at 8674 Cincinnati Dayton Road. Without new sidewalks or streetlights, landscaping isn't going to be nearly as attractive to our area as it will be to the area that has new sidewalks and streetlights. We do not want landscaping done in our area. Thank you, Sarah.
What was your name?
Jan Frankel.
Very good. Thank you, Ken.
My name is Jan Frankel and my home address is 231 Oliver Road, Cincinnati, Ohio 45215. Basically, I'm living in Wyoming, which is just down the road. My business address is 600 Vine Street, 25th floor, Cincinnati, Ohio 45202. And I previously sent an email to all of you, I think also to you, and my family has owned the property, which is identified as number 75. Can we flip it up on here?
Property number 75 is the really large one towards the north. Let's see. Current slide.
Okay. We're a, we're a full-service township, so. Hey, Jan, can you go back to the podium?
It's 75.
Yeah, you can see it. Anyway, it's a 70, thank you. It's a 72-acre tract and it borders the entrance to I-75. My grandfather bought this probably, we're guessing somewhere between 80 and 100 years ago. It's been in the family. It is vacant land. There is no residence. There is no business. We have never had a mailbox. I didn't even know they were giving out mailboxes, but I don't want one because everything comes to my business address. The, and I brought the, a topo so that you can see the topography. There is such a ditch that most of the property has a guardrail that was put in and to protect everybody. The guardrail goes all, almost all the way up. There is no way that there, you could put in a sidewalk. I can't imagine any light posts or signposts. There certainly wouldn't be appropriate to have any benches. I mean, the guardrail is there and then you've got the entrance to the highway. I mean, the guardrail is there, and, and then you've got the entrance to the highway. This, since I have the largest parcel and the most frontage, which is one thousand three hundred and sixty-three, many-year-old feet, I am being assessed or taxed, whatever word you want to use, more than anyone else, it's ten percent, and I have, am getting, or our property is getting absolutely no benefit. So no mailboxes, no light poles, no benches, no sidewalk, no nothing. And so I'm here to ask you to remove this parcel from the landscape district, it's really not part of Old Westchester. It's, it's, it's a, it's a highway, it, the PUD that is interposed on top is for mixed highway use at some point, it's zoned agricultural now, it's, we've got timber on it, and don't anticipate anything more in the future at this point. I think the topography is such that it creates a danger here, thus you've got the guardrail. So I'm asking that this property be removed from the landscape district. So I'm not opposed to the district, I'm just asking that this be removed.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who had any?
I don't, I don't know if you want to see the topogra-
I wouldn't mind seeing it. Thank you so much, I'll bring it back to you after.
I invite any one of you to go walk down there and see if you don't fear for your life.
If you ever want to donate the land at the township, let us know, we can make a nice park out of it, some green, let us know. Was there anybody else who had any opposition to the project? Anyone else?
Mr. McRobb, for, 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 I don't know.
Hop up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Becker, again, my name is Dennis Bradbury, nine oh-two-three, nine oh-three-one, Cincinnati Dayton Road. It shows just the frontage of the folks that own the property on Cincinnati Dayton Road, the four hundred dollar mailboxes. I've already explained that we were prepared to put up our own new mailboxes, they were taken from us. Does anybody know where Habitat for Humanity is? Is that, is that accurate? Does that Reach Out Lakota right there?
Yeah.
Directly across the street from Station Road, there are two homes, Habitat for Humanity. Why'd they get four hundred dollar mailboxes and they're not going to have to pay a dime? That's all I have, thank you, Ms. Becker.
I, I saw on the presentation that the average cost per parcel was forty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents, and the average to, the owners was sixty-three dollars and forty-nine cents per year. The parcel seventy-five is getting the highest assessment, it's over four hundred dollars annually. No benefit.
Is there anyone else who had opposition comments? Last chance. Is there anyone who had any neutral information about the project? Please step forward, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Reverend Tyler Pettigrew, I'm pastor at Westchester Presbyterian Church, eighty-nine-thirty Cincinnati Dayton Road. I also live down in the Deer Park area at forty-two-twenty-two Kugler Mill Road, four-five-two-three-six. I'm here to speak not in opposition or necessarily directly for, but with these neutral information, simply, primarily because I appreciate the work that's been done in the expansion of Cincinnati Dayton Road, and in the sidewalks, and the streetlights, and the signposts that have helped to beautify Old Westchester. I do believe it is indeed an improvement, and I think the idea of trying to set up a fund that would maintain that makes sense. However, as a nonprofit leader, prior to running this church for the last four years, I also ran the city of Cincinnati's largest soup kitchen down and over the Rhine, next to Finley Market. I believe it is worth noting that any idea, whether you call it a tax or an assessment that adds on to nonprofit tax-exempt organizations, something that, though the state allows for, you know, a tax banner in their name is still a tax, and I believe it is not wise to start using whatever terminology you want to adding on to nonprofit, traditionally tax-exempt organizations, things that effectively become a tax. I understand that the amount for our church, our church has multiple parcels that we've had over the years, our church has been existence for a hundred and fifty-one years, in exactly that location, prior about eighteen-eighty, it existed in a house, and then in eighteen-eighty they built the front part of our, our church that still stands to this day. We have expanded over the years to what is there now, and bought property concurrent with that. Our property will, will have a, not a huge share of that, and so we're talking, I haven't done the exact math, but something around a couple hundred dollars a year annually, which to the church is not a huge amount of money, but more than the exact dollar amount, it's the ethic of the thing that somewhat bothers me when we talk about the idea of creating an assessment on nonprofit tax-exempt organizations. I also wanted to read a quote, which I believe is attributed to you, Mr. Welch, from the last meeting. It said this in the paper, "I would think that these nonprofits, these churches, would want to support the community, I just have difficulty with the fairness of this thing." All of our constituents, the members, the participants in our congregation, the vast majority of them come from Westchester Township, most of them are residents and homeowners, and they pay their taxes, they pay for street signage and, and poles to be replaced. While I like the new signage and the new poles, I am not opposed to standard poles that, I grew up in Westchester, and the poles that are in the, part of the Westchester I grew up in were perfectly fine, I do not believe they will ultimately decrease the land value of the property owners on here, I think it's nice, but I also think that it is irresponsible to force nonprofit entities to use money that has been donated by their constituents, who already pay taxes for this purpose, and who have donated it to, in our case, a religious organization, for the purpose of using towards religion, religious mission, to then be forcibly given to a government agency to be used for something that is other than religious mission is a questionable practice, in my mind, if not against the idea of having a nonprofit religious organization. I also want to say, in regards to the comment about being participants in the community, with our, with our church in particular existing here for over a hundred and fifty-one years, arguably Old Westchester as it exists is knit together by the very existence of organizations like mine. There is no community without organizations that do things like welcome new people into the community, like welcome new births into the community, like officiate marriages, like bury three people in the last month alone in the midst of this pandemic. Community is built because we have organizations like mine, so any insinuation that we are not participating in community seems to be not only a misnomer, but a misunderstanding of what the fundamental purpose and mission of a church is, which is first and primarily to be an organization that serves and makes community immediately where it exists. I also want to say that our organization, I think it's underappreciated, though the purple only extends for the church's frontage on Cincinnati Dayton Road, we also own some of the property that, where, where Reach Out Lakota exists. In fact, Reach Out Lakota leases its property from us for precisely one dollar a year, because we believe in the mission of Reach Out Lakota. The building that Reach Out Lakota occupies was built by our congregation for them and given to them in perpetuity, as long as they exist as a nonprofit organization, which if you don't know where Reach Out Lakota is, it is Westchester and the township's primary place for food and clothing pantry organization, our church also sponsors them, financially, I happen to also be a board member there to help the running of that facility. We also provide weekly Monday meal to our community, which we do fifty weeks out of the year and have been doing throughout the entire pandemic, even though we do it to-go format now, rather than sit-down. And I just want to say, you know, those are just a few of the more obvious ways that we are creating, sustaining, making community happen here, and I would just want to be mindful that while we do want to participate in helping this community to exist and continue, that we very much make it a part, a big part of why this community is what it is, is because of institutions like our church, that the idea of forcibly having to give money that was given for religious purposes to a, a state or local entity just seems off the mark to me, and that's the main reason I'm labeling this, not against the concept of it, but against the use of funds forcibly taken from a religious organization. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wanted to present any neutral information? Last chance, neutral? Seeing none? Mr. Kime, would you like to read the resolution? Before he reads it, are there any other questions or comments from my fellow trustees?
Mm-mm.
No? Okay, thank you, thank you, Ken.
First reading of Resolution twenty-six, twenty-twenty, declaring the method of apportioning and paying the compensation, damages, and costs of the maintenance for the landscape and beautification improvements for Cincinnati Dayton Road Landscaping Improvement and Maintenance District.
Very good, thank you, Ken. At this time, I declare the public hearing for the Cincinnati Dayton Road Landscape District closed. At this time, we will adjourn, we've concluded all of our action items tonight in business, so I will undertake a motion to adjourn the July fourteenth regular meeting of the Westchester Board of Trustees.
Does it move?
Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Becker?
Yes, we stand adjourned.